Next application to be heard is Michael B. Z. 23-12, Adia Home Fashions 10-11-11, Jefferson Avenue and 1109-11-363.
Would you state your names, other than your...
James J. Artegas.
So, what is your name? James J. Artegas. Yes, I'm sure that's how you say it.
Marcus J. Artegas. Seventeen short drive from your place of residence.
Marcus, J. Artegas, James Marcus.
Please introduce yourself again to the applicants. The applications for this evening is to develop an existing loading area to provide for a depress entry into the property. At present time, this structure occupies perhaps most of the site. There is a loading dock on Jefferson Avenue, the west side of the property. There is a overhead door, the strike is not a loading dock, overhead door on Jefferson Avenue property. And also a loading door on the east side of the structure, which is adjacent to the bulk lot. It measures approximately forty-five by one hundred feet. Presently, loading is done on the street on Jefferson Avenue side. Also, on the Virginia Street side. However, Virginia Street side is not fully developed. Ground and yard, gate, trucks access that site in particular to Virginia Street. The applicant is seeking to approve that loading area on the east side so as to provide better access to the site, store water retention, and provide loading dock to allow goods to come off a truck at the same level as the dock. At present time, as they're stating, all deliveries are carried from trucks on the ground into the interior of the site. Both proposing to ensure safer access to the site, safer work, quality loading, unloading, and essentially improve traffic at that location. I have Mr. James Marcus here, this gentleman, to address one of the first questions. Do this one over here. Now, Mr. Marcus, you're the general manager of Adia Home Fashions, is that correct?
Yes.
And the site in question is a regular block, corner of Jefferson and Virginia Street?
That's correct.
Has a price of dimensions of two-hundred-and-sixty-nine, seven feet by one-hundred-and-ninety feet?
That's correct.
And it consists of a one-story residential structure, which occupies most of the land except for the origin area of Virginia Street?
That's correct.
And someone at Adia Home Fashions submitted that location?
May I?
And you know what's different for me?
Family ask.
And you know what I am, far attached? And you know what type of activities would be conducted at that site?
Uh, yes, the question is where the building was first located.
That would be on the...
On the Virginia Street.
This is also, there is also an overhead door on Jefferson Avenue side of the property.
That's correct.
And do you know how many years far attached is that location?
Uh, no.
And what type of activity do you conduct there at that location?
Uh, we don't...
I'm sorry?
Bed.
Bed?
Bed.
Okay, and it's essentially a warehouse?
Yes.
So, trucks arrive, drop off, these bed, and then they take it away?
That's correct, yes.
And approximately, the course of day, how many trucks come to that site?
Uh, coming to that site.
And what type of trucks are they?
Straight jobs and units of beds.
So, at the present time, you do most of your loading, or substantial part of your loading, on street on Jefferson?
That's correct.
And when there's overflow, then you use the Virginia Street entrance?
That's correct.
And there is no loading dock at present time?
That's correct.
Everything goes from truck to the ground, and ground into warehouse to the western warehouse up to the truck?
That's correct.
Um, how many employees does Adia have at present time?
I believe between fifteen to twenty.
And what are your hours of operation?
Hours of operations from eight until four P.M.
How many days will you be?
Five days a week.
No weekend activities at that site?
Uh, no whatsoever.
You have the four ball?
No.
Now, the application before the board decision is to essentially provide a better drop side, east side of the building for truck loads, correct?
That's correct.
At the present time, it consists of ground, correct?
That's correct.
And a gate on Virginia Street?
That's correct.
And your proposal is to essentially provide for a depress entry into a loading dock on the Virginia Street side?
That's correct.
And that would have a canopy?
Yes.
So, essentially, we should be known as, we should be from some of this surrounding, this is provision and vision statement, correct?
That's correct.
Uh, you're also proposing new fencing at that location?
Yes.
Landscaping as above?
That's correct.
And also proposing landscaping on Virginia Street to provide additional street trees?
That's correct.
And also intending to repair the side walls and curves where that's required?
Yes.
Now, the whole purpose of this hearing is just to prove that delivery side on Virginia Street side, correct?
That's correct.
Now, you also told me that the way the building is configured now, anything that comes in on Jefferson Avenue side has to make its way through the structure to the side east side of the property?
Uh, which is the Virginia ground, yes.
And this way, by having both sites active, you can have a better distribution of goods inside this structure?
Yes.
Now, by having this loading dock, you're not increasing the number of deliveries that's here?
No.
You're just making it, you're allowing yourself, the building, to load multiple loading dock?
More efficient, yes.
And that's a way to finish?
Yes.
And that is something that cannot be done on Jefferson Avenue side?
That's correct.
That's because the building is of opposite kind of style?
That's correct.
Now, at the present time, when a truck comes into the Virginia Street entrance, they have to come in perpendicular to Virginia Street, correct?
Yes.
So, you have to negotiate any cars and traffic on Virginia Street?
Yes.
And proposing for the board, allow for angled entry into that loading dock?
That's correct.
And this would mean that attorney briefs for vehicles coming into that location would be less?
Yes.
Would have less of an impact on any of the traffic on Virginia Street?
That's correct.
Now, the configuration of the loading dock will allow for trucks and vehicles to completely enter into the loading area?
Yes.
Correct? There would be no part of any vehicle outside of Virginia Street?
Definitely not.
And this is not the case on Jefferson, since right interaction, but loading must reach, correct?
That's correct.
Now, other than what your proposal here, which is obviously substantial change, initial standpoint, some improvements to the site, you're not proposing any other changes to this?
No.
Parking stays the same, everything on Jefferson Avenue stays the same?
That's correct.
And the new application will provide for store water management contention on site?
Yes.
And incorporating water emanating from the approved area of Virginia Street?
Definitely not.
And should we want to prove this application, you would start instant approvals as soon as possible, as well as...
Yes.
Another further question, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had the opportunity to drive past this property today. Looking at it, the way it is right now, behind that fence on Virginia, I saw a large dumpster, it's a weird looking trash. What's going to happen to that dumpster? Do you have a spot for that?
That would be, that would be borrowed with the Jefferson.
Would that be enclosed? Is there any plan to...
That would be, yes.
Alright, thank you.
Commissioner Palmer?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Your route of truck, first of all, what is the purpose of your, your ramp, your proposed landing ramp to be on the angle? What's its purpose? It's not square with, it's not perpendicular with the road. Why is it on a slight angle?
This is to allow more room for turning of the trucks, so they wouldn't be convenient at next door neighbors.
If that's the case, then what you're telling me is that the trucks come in one direction, back in, and go out, always in the same direction to the right?
That's correct.
Okay, so they're not getting...
No.
Oh, yeah, okay, right. Second question is, a loading dock, why would you put it on a angle, or not on an incline? When you get up to the top of the ramp, your trucks are on incline?
Uh, no, this is pitched down.
As the incline referred to?
Yeah. Okay, this would, uh, the, the truck itself would be round, uh, which, which now, we are loading at height of three feet high. Trucks this way would be round.
Well, look at it, it looks like your ramp here is on incline when it gets to the top. Truck is still on incline, so you, you need to unload everything uphill. I mean, I'm just saying, now let's look at this wrong.
It's pretty gradual incline.
Yeah.
It's not like, like, truck, truck...
You're, you're, you guys asked the question, boxes uphill. I'm just saying, is that realistic? Is that what you want?
Yes.
I'll let them know.
We, 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 we know better about the drawn-in the high levels.
Okay, I'll wait for the argument.
Commissioner, any other questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner Benalos?
I understand, uh, this is not, uh, into four-thirty, is it over nine?
Four o'clock.
Oh, four o'clock, sorry, is it over nine?
No. Alright, thank you. I, I actually have a question. In your testimony, you said that you're going to be mostly straight jobs and FedEx trucks and stuff like that. Do you have any provisions, or let me, let me rephrase that. Is this a loading ramp long enough that if you were to bring in, let's say, a tractor trailer?
Yes.
It's big enough that, let's say, you get a bigger order?
Yes.
Your comments, okay?
Correct.
We're good. And if any, see, I didn't see this, uh, alike.
George, all the hotel, three feet eight, the more I...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I did.
Can you describe any other...
Sure, the site is located at the intersection of Jefferson Avenue and Virginia. And it consists of three labs at present time. The cheering one, the one that is triangular portion at the top of the area map, indicating the portion of the first lab, which is located in the city of North Carolina. Located in the city of North Carolina. Then, down from that, there is a larger portion of lab number twelve five sixty-two, which is at corner of difference on the end of Virginia Street. And then there is a smaller lab number twelve twelve eighty-four, which is facing Virginia Street. These are the two labs that are located within the city of Elizabeth, which we are proposing to merge, if this application is approved.
Can you describe this property as a site?
The, there is, uh, one story building that occupies the North Lab and the larger Elizabeth Lab. And a portion of this huge warehouse building contains a second-story office block that faces Jefferson Avenue. The warehouse area of the building is twenty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty square feet. And the office, the second floor office is only twelve thousand six hundred and fifty-six square feet.
Now, Mr. Palmer, do you acknowledge this has been a commercial site at this time, right?
Yes, it has.
Prior to, uh, Jefferson Avenue Fashions making that location, it was far attached?
That is correct.
And, um, time that, uh, property was constructed, was constructed with two loading points, is that correct on site?
Well, I'm not sure about that, right, but it does have two loading points. At this time, the one is at the far end of Jefferson Avenue, and then there is the loading, an overhead door from the building on the larger Elizabeth side facing onto a smaller forty-five hundred square feet side at front of Virginia Street. This overhead door was obviously used for loading and unloading at some point. I'm not sure if it was part of the original building, or it was a later opening. But it is obvious that it has been used as a loading point for many, many years.
At the present time, loading dock Jefferson Avenue is on street, is that correct?
That is correct.
So, there is no loading dock on Jefferson Avenue?
No, there is not.
No real load is in this truck lot?
No, because the building is built up to, to the property line.
And, um, describe the open area to be used to the site where we're closing the modifications below there?
The third lot is the forty-five feet wide by a hundred foot deep. And right now, yes, the outpays are with gravel. And, uh, there is a fence that's around that lot that separates it from the adjacent residential properties. And there's also a retaining wall, so doing the two-foot retaining wall, five-foot fence, there is a seven-foot barrier between this, uh, lot, which is used for commercial purposes, and the residential properties that are adjacent to it.
So, it's from some vehicles accessing that area require the gate opened, and then it would have been perpendicular to Virginia Street, is that correct?
At this moment, yes, it's that's what.
And there are other improvements at that site, there's a cave, there's a maintenance water detention?
No, absolutely not, it's just gravel.
So, the need here for the applicant's standpoint is to provide access to loading, unloading, uh, at a level where we can back up into a loading dock, correct?
That is correct, and also to provide a concrete slab where to, uh, unload the merchandise on toll before coming into the building. And in addition to that, to provide a canopy to always loading and unloading area at the back of the truck from the elements. It will be open, but it will be protected from rain and snow.
Um, estimate the distance of the loading area, proposed loading berth, from the front of the property to the rear of the local lot?
About seven-five feet.
And would this dominate any type of vehicle that would be reasonably expected to service this particular use?
Definitely, yes, of course.
And, uh, that means any vehicle servicing the applicant would be totally within the sun eyes of the applicant's site?
Yes.
Would be no impact on any vehicles passing on Virginia Street? Or any way that a vehicle on site would see any of the activity on Virginia Street?
Only within the, uh, other than that for the time that it would stay there for the loading and unloading operations, no?
That would, that would include not being a detriment to traffic along front of Virginia Street side of the property?
No, absolutely not.
Now, there was a question by Commissioner Benalos with regards to the incline at which the vehicles are parked as we, uh, cross the...
The incline is only four-point-six percent, which is really, not optimal, but still very helpful for unloading operations.
But just gradually?
It is gradually inclined, yes.
Um, so when the vehicle gets to the end of the incline, it's essentially at the level of the loading dock?
That is correct, the back of the vehicle would be at the same level with the loading dock?
So, deliveries on site would not require moving, uh, goods from truck to grade level and then into the structure, is that correct?
No, the operation would be smoother, and the transfer of goods would be at low as loading dock indirectly into the building. So, that means that the truck will be there for, for a shorter time. And, and, uh, we also have enough area to provide, in addition to the fencing that exists there now, we have enough area to provide for five-foot dense evergreen buffer to the residential property owners surrounding this lot. And we have also modified the front fence, which is now a straight line, to make room for some landscaping in front of the fence facing on Virginia Street and facing the neighbors across the street?
So, the loading berth is not perpendicular to Virginia? Is there a reason why it was configured in this fashion?
Yes, the years configured in this fashion to make it easier for the trucks to head back into the lot, the lot from Virginia Street and to, um, out as well from Virginia Street without, uh, needing the full width of the road, so to speak. To manage fear with cars and giving part process of training.
That would be safer, uh, entrance and exit from the site, in your opinion?
Yes, definitely, so.
Uh, at the present time, all access would be perpendicular to Virginia Street, correct?
It is, yes, it's, it's not, yes.
Require a farthest turn of the face, correct?
That is correct.
Would also mean that vehicles are then turning to the right or left on to Virginia Street as opposed to a configuration where the ways that you're down along your rights are now, they...
They can only go to the right of the side, that's what, yes.
Now, obviously, this is a mixed use neighborhood, correct?
That is correct.
And we certainly are aware of fact, there are residential uses in the Indian area. What considerations have been given in fact that there are more residential uses adjacent to and across the side?
For me, the first, uh, point of the fact that this particular lot and the lot down Jefferson Avenue, which are located, excuse me, area is designated as R three eight, contains almost ninety percent of commercial uses. Commercial uses that have been there for many, many years. Having said that, we realize that we are a process station from R three, uh, zone that contains purely residential properties and uses. And we were, uh, very consciously thinking about that with the design. And that is why we are proposing to move the existing fence from the Virginia Street back and at an angle to create planting areas in front of the fence. To be able to provide some meaning facing the neighbors across the street. In addition to that, we're also proposing five-shaped trees on Virginia Street that are now their towers. And, uh, we thought that that would also beautify the area and provide a nicer visual buffer to neighbors across the street.
Now, with regard to spray tech, the section of improvements on the east side of the property, there are other, uh, improvements for construction or expansion of the existing structure based upon, is that right?
No, not at all.
Are you interested in saying to, to acknowledge the operations conducted there?
Very much so, yes.
Now, can you briefly summarize the individual action, certification, and...
Sure, the majority of the varieties we presented here tonight are really existing conditions. They have to do with the front relief setbacks on Jefferson and Virginia Street, the rear relief setbacks, and side yards, and so forth. This is a building that has been there for many, many years. We are not proposing to expand the building in any way that makes this condition worse than what they are now. We do have, uh, two varieties. One is for a buffer, there is a requirement of a ten-foot buffer between commercial use and adjacent residential properties. We are requesting a variety for a five-foot buffer, where there is none now, except for the fencing and retaining wall that I spoke of before. We are planning to keep retaining wall and fencing, but in addition to that, we are planning to install, uh, every buffer along that five-foot, uh, perimeter of this modern lot, where there is no climbing, or small escaping now. The other varieties has to do with the height of a fence in a residential district. We're only permitted to have a three-foot-high fence, and we are proposing an eight-foot-high fence. That is what we have there now. We are planning to modify, as I said, to bring it back at an angle to create, uh, planting, triangles in front of that fence. But we felt that it was important to maintain the height of that fence along with the fighting skirts that would be located in it. So as to really provide a, a visual barrier to the neighbors across the street of the commercial operations inside of this lot. And, uh, because of commercial use in this loading container, unloading use has been here for many years, we're able to, we're going to visually, continue to visually blow out it from the, from the neighbors. Another variety has to do with partying, and I'd like to note that Carver Consulting, in their report, really notes that while we are, while, first, should the application of this song in commission, you know that we've been stated, the site man, reality, and... That is correct, and they say there are only fourteen spaces available alongside Jefferson Avenue in the public right of way, which is a condition that will authorize a vice-camp. I believe we should, if you commission have copied the state council resolution from nineteen eighty-five, I believe. So you have fourteen spaces only where thirty-two spaces are reserved. But I know that being there, I know that the number of employees that they have now and was briefly testified by here tonight does not mean installation of thirty-two spaces. Thirty-two spaces are calculated as a ratio of one parking space for every fourteen hundred square feet of land area. The building is large, but the number of employees is minimal, and a number of them understand the wall for your total transportation to this side. As a matter of fact, I believe by a hundred of pictures of the area of the facility that I took myself on the half of this, and only six or four parts were parked in that parking lot along the personnel. The majority of these spaces were empty at ten thirty in the morning. So I believe that this variety is, in view of that, said that this is a central detriment to the neighborhood and the fencing proposal, buffer in particular, in particular will effectively block or provide a barrier, official barrier for the proposed loading everything to a different property.
So is it fair to say that the benefits of these improvements outweigh the depository of the...
Yes.
Is it fair to say that the positive effects of these improvements on the neighborhood outweigh any negative effect, if I may add?
Yes, I understand.
Another improvement, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually have two questions, as you told. One, I'm still not convinced on the trash bin I saw when I go past there today, the trash dumpster. Where is that going to be relocated to?
I have not seen the dumpster there.
The dumpster is presently there.
I don't really know. I haven't answered to that.
Okay, because presently, it's smack in the middle of the old loading dock. That's where it's sitting right now. In the unapproved loading dock, that's where it's sitting. If they're going to dumpster, I assume a truck picks up and dumps into there. It obviously has to be moved somewhere, and I would like an answer on where it's going to be moved to.
Is it temporary? I answered that. Dumpster is going to be at the Jefferson. Any questions, sir?
I wasn't convinced on your answer to my question. Please allow me to...
Is it a temporary dumpster?
No, I would say not permanent, that's on the Virginia side, and this would be moved. It's not a permanent dumpster, it's a dumpster that waste management comes.
Yes, I saw that.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah. But that would be over the Jefferson gate.
The Jefferson gate, there's plans to close it or sit down there, or...
No, that would be inside the plant, we're going to make a room inside.
There are six businesses inside the plant?
Yes, correct.
And is there going to be outside? And is a lot of the waste management to come under truck and take it out?
No, because when they do come in, they let us know, and we pull the dumpster out. We did that doing while back, especially also when the weather, it snows and it's heavy, we bring the dumpster into the other area.
Okay, that makes sense. Now, I need to answer your question. The second question I have is, so talk about this space, talk about this, and if you'd like, what type of fence are you proposing here?
A chain link fence, lining slots.
Okay, here's my problem with that. It's been the stance of this board to propose ornamental fencing. I would like to request an ornamental gate. I'm not asking you to put an ornamental fence around the entire property, but at least the gate that's going to be open and closed for this loading dock, should this board approve this application, be of an ornamental fence nature. You know what I mean by the ornamental?
I understand what you mean. I'm telling you, a problem with that, if I leave the course of three, I would rather have solid fence and not see the inside. I like the fence and the ornamental fence when I have something nice to look at, the ornamental fence.
Yeah, that's exactly my point. But I'm sure Mr. Yau will probably help us with this, if there's something that we could, or they make some type of fence that would have that to look, put some kind of a string or something in the back, that's all possible. So you're not really looking into the area we're talking about here?
You look, but not see?
Exactly.
Okay.
You understand?
Yeah, I get the point, I don't know if something like that exists, would be happy to look into it.
I'm sure, it certainly against the front of the gate, and you're doing your best to it with landscape, I say, and the trees, and that would just add that extra element of, not so much, it would soften it, in my opinion, it would soften the air. So I'm not sure if something is made in that nature or not, but certainly worth looking into.
Yeah, if I could just say, I believe one of the reasons why that area is good fenced is because the neighbors have a problem. One of the reasons why that area is fenced is because the neighbors were having problems with people accessing that open area, and when the company put in that large fence, it alleviated that problem. So I understand what you're saying, but the security is for two purposes, security for the applicant and also security for the neighbors so that people don't use that open area.
Yeah, but still, it'd be something, you know, to be as high as eight feet with the decorative top, even with the spikes on top, decorative spikes, that security shouldn't be an issue. And in this day and age, I hope the gentleman has security cameras or whatever, that's certainly something to consider.
And the owner just proposed, he says, yes, if they're willing to consider, for the final, we have come back again from the board, if there's a look, you will look into something more decorative.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And would also be prepared to stipulate that the dumpster would be maintained inside the site?
Absolutely.
So that it can be enforced a little bit?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Nastalas, so what is, what is the position of the applicant, the fence that Commissioner Carver just suggested?
They have agreed that we will look into it.
No, looking into it is one thing, Mr. Thor.
And trying to change it?
No, no. Well, I need a define, a better answer to the question, not looking. You know, we're going to pull this application right now. So Commissioner Carver proposed an ornamental fence in the front of the bay, and that's what I agree with. So let's make a decision from that moment on.
Mr. Chairman, we will stipulate that subject to the board's final approval on final cycle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ultimately, we'll get the final say, and we'll see exactly how it goes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I do want to clarify that I did misinterpret the plans, that the ramp itself is downward, not upward, as I mentioned before, and also confirmed by the architect, so it sounds a lot more what it should be doing. So I just want to apologize for my misinterpretation.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, is that a question? Or Mr. Thor?
Yes, Mr. Thor.
Said that, you know, a truck can be there for a short period of time, what is the maximum? I heard you said that a truck can be there for a short period of time, what is the maximum time for a truck to stay there?
I said it's a short, short period of time, I'm pretty not sure.
That's what I said.
But it would be a short period of time for it to be able to load and unload.
So I said, what is the maximum?
I don't have an answer to your question, can you be on the desk?
I can certainly give that information to you.
Please, yeah.
For any other important questions?
I do have questions regarding this fence. Do you plan on, when this truck is at this berth, is the fence closed? Is it open? I mean, how would that work? I mean, is that, is one, I understand that one of the principal reasons for having a fence there is during the times of non-operation of the building, this fence would be closed and shielded from, you know, the impact of the commercial operation of the rest of the neighborhood. During operation of the actual unloading and unloading, will this fence also be closed to shield this truck from being in this, in this loading dock? Is that, is that also a purpose?
It's the intention, but that would depend on the size of the truck. If it's a larger truck, then the gate would have to stay open. But in most, most cases, the gate would be able to be closed for the duration of the loading and unloading operation.
Well, if the fence was across the front of the property line of this property, and you were told that at no point would a truck ever be encroaching on the right of way of the pedestrian, I'm assuming that no matter what truck is there, it will be able to keep the fence closed. Is that, am I thinking the right way?
Yes. The gate is open here, cannot allow to be left the right way, because it has to swing in, it needs about four feet of space to close one way.
Okay, I got it.
But if the truck is forty feet, then we have forty feet, right? Three, and we'll be closed.
Okay, wonderful.
Thank you. Put this to the law.
That's all. Is there any other questions?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I have a question, I can't think, it's going to be covered this. This loading dock, is it mentioned in the campaign?
Yes.
Is there a color specified for this?
A color?
A color, yes.
Usual, aluminum, color.
Nothing bright, no stain, or something. It's going to be, you hear it comes from the side, and I think you know this.
I think if you were there with neutral, I think I'd have...
I'll accept that. I think I would like to say, like, with the...
Do you have any comments, Mr. Thor, to consider, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Um, Mr. Thor, to talk something about how long the lease truck take to deliver goods to that site on the applicant. And with this improvement of the loading dock, will that facilitate quicker loading and loading?
Oh, we think, wow, we have this on the message.
So trucks will take much less time to load and unload with this configuration?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Thor?
Thank you.
That good?
Thank you.
Commissioner Thor?
How many trucks are supposed to be there alone in half a time? Just for one in a time?
One, probably.
One truck at a time? So if someone else comes in, they have to wait on the street?
Uh, not really, no. Uh, the employees, I mean, I mean, I mean, schedule the big trucks. How many trucks? I have several trucks today. Commissioner, is there any other questions? Is there any members of the public that wish to comment on this application itself? Will you step forward? Step forward.
Come on, have your question here. Would you raise your light in it? You do solemn and square. Any testimony of him will be the truth, all truth and none but the truth. Have a seat, take the microphone out of the stand, hold it right next to you now. Would you state your name, your salary, and your address?
Fair V P R A, eleven twelve, James.
No, you're listening.
On the address S N G E S. Eleven twelve, for sweet. Okay, that's true, since, but I want to property drive on that gate.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I think you have to speak, I can get a little bit more clear.
My question is, since I want to progress, both drivers are in front of that gate, if I...
You want to progress both?
Yes, and both drivers are in front of that gate.
Drive through the opposite gate?
Yes, by the front. So in case, like, if you come home and park my car outside, all the trucks going back out, since cars parked on both sides of the street, and the street is not so wide, it's only one part of it, in the mirror, when two cars are parked on both sides. And then if they damage the driver, when the gates, they come inside my driver, who's going to fix it? Who's going to be responsible for it?
Have you ever had the plans, yes?
Yes, I have.
So you see that the...
Yeah, there's handwork.
That happens.
Yes, but you get control of drivers, which way they can go.
Well, that is absolutely true. What we can do is create a safer, more accessible way of reaching a loading crate already exists. That is already there, and when a truck comes to that location, right now, we have to convert it to a separate site, which means that there are more dangers and more access to the site. This is a far better way to access the site altogether. Obviously, you know, you have to control this particular use, commercial use, by the way, at the same time, we need to maybe take it, certainly more accessible. I understand your concerns, but...
Yes, it just, if someone parks the car, the driver, the key, the driver, the driver makes a left turn, he steals the car, they run away because the person is inside the house.
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding what you're saying.
Well, Mr. Menendez, we can't, we can't control the criminal act of an individual. What we, what we can do is make our sites safer, more accessible, and certainly more places to be hot. I understand your concerns, but, you know, people have to coexist. You, you moved into that property, you knew that there was a commercial...
Yes, but some trucks back and forth, and that, it's a driver, his car goes in, his car just runs through.
Well, but this acting has every right to use the site.
I'm not saying...
You can use this one if you want, and you can use it just the way it is, or you have, so I understand this, at least in my opinion, the impression, or what's in that.
Well, I don't mind for them to use that way, I just want it in my safety and for my girls, since I have two girls, and for the neighbors, they have their own cars and stuff, and I understand that, who's going to be responsible for it? Because since the driver, probably the person they are doing, not construction, they say, well, we didn't do it, the driver did it, we should have taken the license plates. I'm not home, so who's, who's going to pay for it? I gotta come to the town.
How many times has that happened since you've been in there?
Not a lot, because no trucks they are there. They don't use that driver. That driver, our ladies, our trucks come ready to leave, but you keep traveling.
This is a seventy-five-foot loading berth.
Okay, but when they turn, how wide is the street? The street is not so wide for the truck to turn.
Ms. Menendez, well, let me just say this, and...
I mean, I don't mind if they do it, I just want it safe, and I don't want them to lose my property, or damage any car this year, and then who's going to be responsible for it? That's all. That's all, who's going to, who's going to be there for it? I have to own my furniture, I have my laptop, or something, I have my own house.
The, the, the way that the applicant has, has, has come forward for the board to make this work for everyone, and your comments, of course, the entire board has listened to them and will take them into consideration when, you know, coming up with this. The board cannot offer you information in terms of like, who's going to be responsible? I mean, in an automobile, automobile accident, you know, it happens on...
It's on the...
Exactly. And that responsible party would just need to be responsible, and be responsible enough to be able to say, he was in the right of the car, and here's my opinion, there's no way for, especially for the board, to be able to control it.
I know.
Are you have any other, those are your closer concerns, please, I'm going to put it...
I would say, you have the personnel that's fine, the trucks are running for too long, so he wants to find that, it just... for too long, so it was fine, that's, it just, uh?
There's a more question?
Yes, and I probably keep up, enjoy it.
Are there any other members in the audience that wish to step forward? Seeing none. Seeing none. Vice Chairman Compa.
I understand, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I have to hear your testimony of the applicant, the professionals, and the neighbors. And I do understand and sympathize with the neighbor and their concern. We do, and I understand exactly what you're saying. My only suggestion to you would be, I don't know what kind of rapport you have with the owner, but perhaps building a better rapport that if something does happen, and someone does notice it, they would be responsible enough to come to you and say, that was my UPS guy, he came in, we know who it was, and we'll deal with it accordingly. I mean, that's what insurance is for. I hope that never happens to you, I truly do. But perhaps a better or a more understanding rapport with the applicant. From a zoning perspective, it's not a bad application, and that's what we're here really to look at. So I hope that's, that answers some of your questions. If you do notice something that's going on, just approach the owner. I'm sure he'll be sympathetic enough to maybe do just an adjustment that needs to be made. Or if a particular driver is doing this, then you talk to that driver, and you say, it's not acceptable. Either you got a different truck or a different driver in there, because these are the neighbors that live in that area. With that said, Mr. Chairman, again, I don't think it's a bad application. They're willing to conform with the decorative gate in front of the building that we suggested. The dumpster would be good on the Jefferson Avenue side, inside the building, away from any neighbors and any smell. And again, that rapport would be built up between the neighbors and the owner. I think it would be a smoother transaction for everyone. So with that said, I'm not favoring this application. Mr. Chairman, I have a thought. If anything, the way I see this application, it's bettering not only the applicant for his business, but the traffic flow for the neighborhood. I mean, you're looking at it, he's putting trees, he's putting shrubs, he's enhancing with a fence. The flow, looking at it, is better than what it is today, or will be better than it is today. That will benefit the neighborhood in general. I think it's a good application, and I think it's good for the neighborhood.
Commissioner, any other? Let me just say, from the security standpoint, as far as what the neighbor complains about, I think that the way that it's laid out, the way that the earth or the truck is laid out, would force a truck to only come into one direction and only to leave in one direction. And I think that that kind of makes for better planning for the neighbors in terms of, you know, if you know the truck is leaving always in that one direction, because of the way that the earth is pointing into, onto the Jefferson Avenue side of the block, it makes it so that, generally speaking, almost, I would say ninety-nine percent of the trucks are going to be leaving in that one direction. And if you already know that, you could probably make a little bit better planning, maybe, you know, with your car or something, that allow or minimize the amount of accidents that may happen in the future. The application, even though it's a, is a decent application from a zoning standpoint, just like Vice Chairman Compa said, and I think that your relationship with the existing owner, I think, will minimize any kind of disturbance that you'll have with your next door neighbor, especially with the kind of improvements he's making to the property to minimize the impact of the commercial operation going on in a mixed-use neighborhood. Do I have a question?
Motion to approve the application with the conditions presented by Commissioner Carver.
Motion to approve pending the changes to the application presented by Vice Chairman Compa. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Silva, Madam Secretary.
Vice Chairman Compa.
Aye.
Commissioner Fernandez. Commissioner Castro.
Aye.
Commissioner De Niro.
Aye.
Commissioner Silva.
Aye.
Reverend Dixon. Chairman Wood.
Aye. Reverend.
Good, Commissioner De Niro.